I'd like to call to order this special meeting on the Board of Finance, Monday, March 4th, 2019. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Stupified, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your first agenda item is that we have approval of the special meeting minutes from February 20. Do you have anybody in here who can get those minutes? If you're curious, there are Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from the 27th religious Board of Finance.
That's the attachment here.
Oh, okay. All right, how about entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
Move to accept as submitted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Next topic is the first selectman's presentation on the this year 20th.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Depending on how many questions there are, this is probably going to be a fairly short presentation because I'm going to give you a summary of both the operating budget and the capital budgets, and there are two of those. There's the regular capital budget and then an estimate of the capital nonrecurring. And I have a number of handouts for you, but I'm going to point out that if you have your computers open, if you go to account 100 for the selectman's budget and you open that up, you'll see under proposals, there are seven supporting documents. So we have, Bob Kozlowski and I have sliced and diced the information a number of different ways. So again, I'm not going to take you through 3,000 lines of Excel spreadsheets, line by line. I'll go through the summary and then as we have questions, we can open those up and try to answer questions as best I can. So to go to the summary, and let me see if I can get this. Dan, can you tell if, is this a slide?
This.
Slideshow, there we go. Okay. All right. So this, you're going to see that we're going to have kind of a challenge this year, and I think you've all pretty much surmised that anyway, but you'll see that the total that we're working with this year is of course quite a bit higher than any of us would like. And I'll explain why that is in a couple of minutes as we go through it, but you can see that there are some increases across the board except for 460. That was one of the things that was reduced slightly by the Board of Selectmen. But you'll see that, and we'll go through those reductions in a couple of minutes, but you'll see the biggest thing that stands out, of course, is the debt load. And this is being driven by the police station debt, which is coming online, as well as some of the early, yeah, pass those out. I do have copies of this for you, we'll upload that as well, so you have a copy for yourself. Budget reductions that were voted on last week by the Board of Selectmen, you'll see that the, out of the total that was requested by the town, 400, almost $432,000 worth of reductions were put in there. Out of 22 line item departments, going from department 100 through 460, out of 22 departments, 21 of them were reduced. One of them was increased, the only one that was increased was tree warding by $5,000 in the interest of public safety. But the total reductions from what was requested by the education department and the town departments is a little over $632,000. That represents a 5.35% in the overall budget, and you can see from this breakdown where the major pain is. And we're going to go through some of these in a little bit greater detail. But town operations, because town operations carries a lumber of fixed cost items that can't be changed, you'll see that even with the debt service removed, there's an increase there that we have to deal with. Slight decrease in school, that was a zero increase, but the Board of Selectmen elected to take a token amount out just because we're trying so hard to bring this budget within a range that we think that the public will support. Education, we did take $200,000 out of that, so that is now down just slightly below a 3% increase. These are the dollar changes that translate into those percent changes. You can see, even though we have some revenue coming, there's some increases that we have to explain to the public. Key budget drivers, debt services the big one, but parks and recreation, of course, is when you go through the, as you've gone through all the department presentations, I'm sure you noticed that park and rec had a larger than normal increase, but keep in mind that this is offset by new revenue. Public works has some increases in it. We were trying to move up the highway budget a little bit higher than what it is. The department had requested $933,000, if you remember. Last year's number was $700,000. My recommendation was $800,000, but the Board of Selectmen moved it down to 733, so just a modest increase there. But we're, you'll see when we get to capital nonrecurring, we're going to try to do a little bit better in there if our luck holds out. Building Department and Health Department both have very substantial growth in workload, but keep in mind that there are fee schedules in place there that produce new revenue. So for the most part, the Building Department is self-supporting when you actually add up the revenue. Health Department is almost there, they're not quite there, but the new fee schedule that was put in place that took effect January 1st is helping a great deal. This is what the breakdown looks like with the 5.35% increase. Again, you'll see the biggest increase, just because of the scale, is schools, but the debt service is just right behind it. That accounts for 1.71 of the 5.35%. And then you can see how the rest of that breaks down. Wages, salaries, overtime, as well as negotiating contingencies are contained in that line. Capital nonrecurring was $500,000 last year, we moved that up to 650, which was Mr. Kozlowski's recommendation. And again, part of the overall strategy to bring these costs into the operating budget and save the capital budget for actual capital items like capital construction. Parks and Recreation up .19, but keep in mind again that that's offset by revenue. Public Works and Legal are just based on historic, historical, actual expenditures. So again, Park and Rec, Building and Health Departments are experiencing some growth in revenue, as well as some very healthy growth in the grand list. Grand List is up by 1.5%, and that has produced some new revenue that's going to help us out with that 5.35% increase. This is what it looks like. Current mill rate is 32.87 because of the new revenue, and these are estimates. I want to say, you're going to hear me say the word estimate about a million times because as we know, when we go to vote on a budget, we're voting on the expenditures. We're not voting on the mill rate and we're not voting on revenue, but it's important to keep in mind how that interplays with the budget so people have a clear expectation. So the estimated new mill rate, this is as always with the Comptroller's Office, this is a very conservative estimate, we think that it would be, to handle this budget, would be an increase of less than one mil. It would go to 33.79, that represents a 2.68% increase in the mill rate. And that translates on the median household in Bethel to $193 per year or a little over $16 per month. And that is really the summary. If you want to go through details, tell me where you'd like to start. I can, I have, the PDF labeled Detail of All Accounts will show you every major department category and all of the sub-accounts, the goal with the OZL codes. And you will be able to see in this spreadsheet what was requested, what was approved by the Board of, by the Board of Selectmen, and what the increase or decrease represents.
No, I'm sorry, which attachment is that?
Detail All Accounts.
Detail All Accounts.
And it is printed off, please.
Yeah, if you would prefer, I printed everything off just to make it, if it's easier to deal with paper.
Bob, what was the estimated dollar amount of the growth in the grand?
Bob, do you know that?
About a little over $1 million.
I think it was like 1.1 or something, what, million?
Yeah, I think it's about 1.1%.
Does the total increase came out of foreign change, something like that? What was the background on the change?
The increase on?
The whole overall budget.
The increase is $3,992,092.
You know, what really would help me, and I've been asking, I don't know how to ask for it in a way that's going to make sense or get it for me, but I want to see the revenue from different departments. Like you alluded to it here, and that's great, it's great that revenues are offsetting it. I'm trying to find Park and Rec and whatnot. Oh yeah, okay. So the, so you know, the budget drivers, right? So you have Park and Rec, that's your focus, but then you say there's fees, there's fees, but is there no way to get the actual fee increases so that we could see how bad?
Yeah.
That should be in the narratives. Pretty much all the department has.
The department has mostly put it in there, but if you want a summary.
I don't know, did they put in everything?
I can't guarantee that they all did. I think Chris did.
I just would like to see every department that generates revenue, a breakdown of that, just a list of what the fees are, how they're offsetting these increases, because it would be very helpful to have a hard number.
Bob, can you tell me what last year's revenue was roughly?
Revenue was?
Well, I mean, we have a one, let's just call it a one.
The total revenue last year was the full $74 million between taxes.
I'm trying to think of the offset that the departments brought in.
Well, Park and Rec brings in 601,000. That's in the narrative. Senior Center brings in, I think, what did we say, Bob, 40 or 50?
Yeah, probably around 55,000.
Yeah, it was 30,000 last year, but they're adding some programs that bring revenue in.
Okay.
Those totals too are on your monthly sheets I give you as you go along.
Matt, I have a question on Public Works. Cynthia, were you done? I didn't mean to interrupt the five. Were you done?
I, you know, I can go back and get all the things that you gave me every month, but I just would like to see on one paper, it would just be very helpful. So if that's possible, it's possible.
No, we do.
Are you?
Yeah.
In Public Works, 230 Public Works Administration, if I'm reading this right, the Board of Selectmen recommended reducing it by 53,500. Do you know what those items were? Did you have specific?
Yes.
Recommendations without having to go back to?
Yes.
Check the minutes, check the minutes that I left with the Board of Selectmen, the line items of what they took out are in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you have the minutes because there's a lot of stuff in there, but I can tell you what it is. They recommended two one-time purchases. One was like an engineering examination of the culverts in town, and the other one was a, hire a company that does a examination, like a quality examination of all the roads.
Of the roads at 38,000?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So we didn't think that those needed to be in the operating budget. We didn't yet put them in the capital nonrecurring. We haven't accounted for all of that, but we figured if we're going to do either of those things, and they may not be urgent at all, they might be able to be pushed off, so we took those out.
And then transfer station, you took, where'd it go, 29,5?
Yeah.
Was that a specific item or just?
Yep, similar thing. They wanted, they wanted to do, make an improvement to the shed.
Okay.
That is, it's not structural. It would be, it's one of those things where you can shield the drop-off area a little bit from rain if you make some minor alterations, but we didn't feel that it was necessary this year, so we took that out. And again, if we did that, that would be something that we'd probably recommend for capital nonrecurring, not in the operating budget. The other thing is, you'll see when we go through capital, that a lot of the, almost all of the fire equipment, aside from trucks, and I might as well tell you guys, we didn't put them in yet because of the size of the capital request, and we figured we have to deal with some of these things as a one-off. But all of the other supplies, like masks, air bottles, compressors, some of those things were all put into capital nonrecurring. There's one, you know what, I don't see it in the computer, I might have forgotten to upload that, but there's one spreadsheet that you have for your reference as you deliberate. This is called Town Operating Budget Recommendations by Account and Object Code with Presentation Notes. So as we went through this and we were taking notes on what the department had said, we put the reasons for some of these requests along the right-hand side.
Oh, those are the questions I was asking?
Yeah.
So, in fact, to the parks and recreation, I saw in my notes that I think the projected revenue was 601, which was an increase from prior year, which, fiscal year. It was a pretty solid increase. And I assume this is based on the new programs. Yet, if, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the math of the increase asking for for the additional programs versus the increase in the revenue, it wasn't a one-to-one ratio. It was, you know, I think it was like two-to-one or something along those lines. So is, not that I'm not against enhancing the community with, you know, more programs, but you know, if your return isn't exactly solid there, I have to challenge, are these programs being fully utilized, are they underpriced? Is there a way to narrow that gap somewhat?
The increases you're seeing aren't the programs. The increases in the programs are offset by increases in program revenue. What you're seeing is.
Program costs versus program revenue.
You're seeing the other part of the Park and Rec cost, which is the stuff that's not related to programs. And the biggest part of it is increase in maintenance because of the new police station. Because that's really outside of our department's capability because of the wide areas. So there's, so Park and Rec has a contractor that would do some of the mowing and landscaping, and Public Works has a contractor to do the snow flowing. So mowing, sidewalks, that's that kind of stuff. So that's where you're seeing the increase that's over and above the program. And I'm glad you brought that up because in previous years, you know, people would look at the overall Park and Rec budget and say, well, you know, it's X amount of dollars, we can take X percent, but you have to understand that if you cut those things that are not program-related, you're actually taking a bigger chunk away from the department's ability to provide service. Because they do all the fields, the irrigation, the fertilizing, the mowing, they do even downtown, they keep downtown nice, PT Barnum, emptying the trash cans, the recycling, all that stuff. So the non-program costs that you see, go for that.
Thank you. There's another area that, you know, seems to come up every budget time, and it has to do with police overtime.
Yes.
And, you know, I take it on faith that they manage the overtime, and there were some very good explanations of why they need overtime in order to cover largely dispatch. But it is a hard thing to communicate to the population that the overtime is really, is essential it is. Are there any thoughts in terms of how we could quantify that or make that a little more transparent, other than an act, you know, it's somewhat of an active faith that it's being managed, you know, optimally.
Sure.
But, and I don't have any reason to suspect that it isn't, it's just that it's, it's a tough one. We need overtime. Overtime doesn't sound good because it sounds inefficient, whereas the explanations were it's not inefficient, it's just the way things are structured.
Well, keep in mind when the chief and the captain made their presentation, that they focused on the historic overtime. Overtime, for whatever reason, in a couple of different departments, has been underbudgeted. And what happens is the Comptroller's Office keeps some money in contingency and they reconcile it at the end of the year. So it's rather similar to the paramedic program. There's an effort now to simply budget it appropriately according to, excuse me, historical, the expense history. And if you, if it would help you, the Police Commission looks at the overtime and the budget performance at every one of their monthly meetings, and they produce a financial report that explains the overtime. So in real time, though, the Board of, or the Police Commission gets a spreadsheet that shows exactly where the salary account is, where the overtime account is. In the past, it's been the case that in some years, if the overtime went up, it was because they had a police officer or a dispatcher who was out, like maybe, you know, out workers' comp if there was an injury, or if somebody was pulled into the military. Several of our officers are reservists and they will, sometimes be pulled away, so the salary expenditure would drop and then the overtime would go up. So they, they kind of go in opposite directions. But still, historically, the overtime budget has been inadequate to cover vacations, sick time, so on, when they have to hire a person to fill in. But we could, if you would like those, to see those Police Commission finance things, we can just forward them to you when they come in, in the future.
I guess my question is on the salary lines, most of the time, most years, with the overtime, you normally don't utilize your full salary that you've budgeted because, you know, police departments, you have six steps for officers to go through.
Right.
When someone's on workers' comp, insurance covers their salary while they're out, so the town isn't paying that salary. So my question would be, would be historically, I mean, if we're looking at it as a total, what's, before you make the transfer to cover the overtime, Bob, what's normally left in the salary line historically? Like on average year, what do you normally have left in that line?
I'd have to take a look. I can't get units from here right now, but I can check and I'll have it for you for tomorrow night.
Yeah, I just think that, I mean, you know, because that's one line that we could probably reduce and not really put ourselves at great risk because the money's owed, you know, there. If you have five officers at second step, you know exactly how much you have budgeted for the salary line, because you don't take that into account. You budget for a full top step officer, correct?
Or it might be a way to save money on your budget.
Bob, you said you take the, or Matt said, when overtime is over budget, you take it out of contingency, or do you take it out of their negotiated salaries? Where do you, how do you cover?
Overtime, there's a separate account for overtime.
I know that.
Yeah.
And when it goes over?
Then it's a combination when we do the transfers at the end of the year.
But you do the transfers from within the police department budget, like the money's left from negotiated salaries?
Well, we, we did it in the entire department budget compared to the other department budgets throughout the town hall. We do those transfers. Remember where we have the debit and credit?
No, I understand that, but you don't do it per line item?
Not within the budget, no.
So, well, we can always get back and get into that when we do our deliberations, sorry.
Bob, I have a follow-up question that kind of touches on what Cynthia was describing and what Robert was describing. It has to do with revenue. To your point, you've given us a lot of information each month, you give us an update in the annual summary, it tells us what was projected. I guess if we're just trying to do a sanity check, or maybe even Cynthia has a little bit more refined, is it true that we basically track pretty closely an actual revenue to what we budget?
I would say so. I mean, some accounts may be shot, you know, depends on the year we convey tax, let's say, but it may be over because we're collecting more, there's more sales and more homes are changing hands. Interest this past year is going to be over too because the interest rates have gone up, you know. But there may be a couple of counts here and there permits that may be down from what we budget. We have budgets for each individual line item for revenue.
Licenses and products?
Yeah, that all comes out of Town Clerk's office.
Charges for services?
And she has, she has a schedule, I'm sure, I didn't look in there, but I'm sure on Open Gov, she has a schedule of what she's collected last year on a 12-month basis and what she's collected so far this year.
Same thing for use of money and property right that's easy.
That's the rents, that's the rents coming from the YMCA.
Okay. So when we're, when we go into our deliberation, you know, our practice has been to focus on the expense side, but what taxpayers, I think, want to know is how is it going to hit, how is our suggestion, our recommendation going to hit them in the block? Therefore, we want to take into consideration revenue, and again, all the numbers that you provide us each month and you give us an annual estimate for, how confident should we be that when we go and do a mill rate increase assessment, that the numbers we're using for revenue are accurate?
Are very, very accurate, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
And the decrease that you did to the Board of Ed, school maintenance was just a, just a cut a little?
Yeah, I mean, not exactly a comfortable thing to do, but we're, we understand that there's going to be some words discussed about this budget, and we're trying to get it down to be a reasonable, acceptable budget that will pass on the first try.
Sure.
And I want to stress that, you know, there were some things we moved around, there were some things we took out, like I said, the public work stuff, there were some things we slid over to capital nonrecurring because they're one-time expenses. There wasn't anybody that was out of line. Every budget was reasonable, Board of Ed budget was reasonable, the Fire Department budgets were reasonable. They have, they've both put together a very compelling argument for a new fire truck, and it is something we're going to have to deal with sometime in the next year. We did not put it on this list, but we understand that, you know, the one that's being driven right now is not going to last forever. It's not like a bottle of wine, it doesn't get better with age. But we just felt, all three of us felt that we had to just try to be as gentle as possible, but get cuts that, you know, we'd never be able to pass a 5% tax increase, there's just no way around it. But we wanted to get that change in the mill rate down to a level that we believe, subjectively, that most residents can understand when they see the numbers and will accept. Because the biggest part of it, if you back out the debt load, we're in great shape, you know, it's the new stuff that we bought, as Chair of the Board of Finance has said many times.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The 460 account?
Yes.
Historically, that ranges between, and correct me if I'm wrong, like 5 to 550,000 coming out a year?
Usually.
Okay.
Yeah.
But when you five, that's normally for five schools, correct?
Correct, but a lot of it is maintenance. Of course, I wish Terry were here, but she's.
Terry's here.
A lot of them is maintenance, so when you look at the actual expenditure of projects, you're not going to see any for Rockland Johnson because they're going to be renovated. But it doesn't, and we have historically gone over that account and gone into the board account many times.
I think you'll see the projects, we said, at 132,000 between the other three schools, but the 20 that was reduced will come out of that line, so.
And historically, though, when you're going with five schools, what would your project cost be on that? Because you said normally it's the contracts that, right, are the driving cost. So like on a year where we're not doing renovation, what would your expected budget be for five schools?
We've been at the 500,000 level for.
As long as I've been here.
I'd say the last 10 years. And we just make it work, things get to fruition. And we just make it work. Things get deferred or either things get done or they get deferred or sometimes if I have money on the board side and something has to be done, we do it there.
I, I just want, this is, this is an ideological thing, but I just, there are three departments that specifically told us ways that they were trying to save money and reduce spending. And, you know, you're absolutely right. All the departments make a reasonable point of their budget. You know, it's a reasonable argument. Well, I just don't see how, um, to keep spending and raising taxes, how that's going to result in prosperity for the town. So, so my, I just, that, I long for that. I want departments, I want them to lead with that. I mean, wouldn't that be something that the people might want to hear? I think they would. And I just, I never hear it. It's like, we're not growing, we're growing here. We need to, you know, relieve the people who are trying to live out there. And I just, it's just ideological. I think that we do not spend enough energy looking for ways to curb spending and spend less.
Suggestions?
I don't need to, do you want, do you want me? I mean, I'll, of course, I mean, so many suggestions.
Well, I mean, that's going to be part of your deliberation. I would have to disagree on one point. I, I heard most of our department heads lead with that. And, I mean, if you're dealing with postage increases, you're dealing with, uh, supply increases. Uh, salt, you know, went up, sand went up, salt went down.
You know, I'm not talking about that type of thing. I'm not.
Well, I.
I'm talking about offsetting, like, you know, the revenue offsets, areas that can offset.
This is, this is why we changed the whole revenue schedule for the, uh, for the two departments, for building and for, for health. Uh, I mean, every, we, this is a major part of our discussion.
If that's not saving, that's increasing revenue, which is fine. Needs to happen. I'm talking about within the budget, ways to reduce it on one side like a seesaw. And, you know, if you have to increase it on one side, then something else has to go this way. You know, you tell me, you tell me the departments that, tell me, cause I, I want to, I'll look at them.
It's in the narrative. They, they all, every, we, Bob and I start this process in November and we meet with every single department and we go through things line by line. And we, we look at every single item. You know, you can, you can call that line item budgeting. There's zero-based budgeting. We challenge every single thing.
And that's fine. That's not really, I guess I'm not being clear. I don't necessarily need that, that, because reducing things doesn't need to live without, to go without. I mean, that's not what I mean. It's like, oh, do you really need this? Let's just get rid of it. I'm just saying, just efficiency. There are ways to be more efficient. That's all I'm asking.
And unfortunately, sometimes in some departments that you have to spend a little bit of money to, to get there. And a good case in point is, if you remember the conversation with Chris Baldwin, we are finally moving into a place where we can launch in the upcoming year, an online permitting system. And eventually, that is going to make the department more efficient. Um, and, you know, it's not going to take that long either. Now, I'll warn you though, uh, are we going to like, you know, reduce staff size? No. That's probably not going to happen, but the work output will get much larger and we'll be able to do more work as the town grows with the same amount of staff. I mean, I've, I've looked through, uh, we've all looked through those things with other towns and looked at how they work. But this is, we're, it's funny, the governor's trying to do the same thing. Look for, look for efficiencies through technology and, you know, we're going to be doing some of that over the next year.
And that's great. I have no, I think, I have always supported technology. I think it's great. So I'm just saying my opinion. I just, you know, just think that, um.
Right. Um, I guess one question I would have, you know, last year we had some spirited debates um, to do with the 1.3 billion and, you know, increased revenue through reassessment, stuff like that. And, you know, again, this is, you know, some of our thoughts were, hey, let's buy down the mill rate because we're heading into a year that's going to be tough because debt service is coming on and we're not going to have $2.1 million to play with like we did last year. And here we are this year and we're facing a real situation, the facts that, hey, debt service is here. You know, hey, we voted for the projects and I get it. My question would be is, and, you know, I hope we could attack this in a bipartisan way, unless spirited than in past years, is, you know, where's debt service going next year? And where's it going the year after that? It's not going down. It's going up exponentially. And, you know, although some of the cuts may be painful right now, they may be necessary, is what I'm trying to say. And the only other thing that I might suggest, I don't know if we're allowed to do it. You know, one thing I've never really felt comfortable with is, you know, micromanaging the department. You know, Matt, you're the CEO of the thing, right? You know, I really feel the board of finance job is to come up with a percent increase that we feel is reasonable and then hand that back over to the selectman and Matt to determine where those cuts should come from. Because, you know, sitting here for seven nights, I don't get the full picture of what's going on, you know? I'm just looking at the overall financial wellbeing of the town. And my personal opinion is, is no matter how necessary the spending is, 5.3, 5% will be bet on arrival when it hits the loaders. I believe that. I, I just don't, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty in the state. There's a lot of, you know, people are very concerned about the financial stability of the state and where our state taxes are going. People are getting some pretty serious tax implications this year, right? With, you know, the new laws on deductions for local tax, state tax. So I, I just really think we need to collectively come up with a number that really works and then turn that back over to Matt and his team to come up with, you know, where the money comes from. I think that's, in my mind, this would be a more professional, unfair way to do it.
And, but I, I would add to that, that it's going to be tremendously important for us to take into consideration future debt service. We do have schedules, right? Bob's handing them out that board of finance needs to do. So let's, let's all kind of take the opportunity to look at that. The other thing we're going to have to deal with is like this board inherited $10.5 million of short-term debt. We're going to have to pay that down, right? That was spending that was made without raising the revenue to pay it off. So this board has had that challenge. I just bring this to the attention of the public and it's just another thing. We're going to have to feature in our deliberation as a how to pay off. Unfortunately, we've gotten that number down to 3.8 million. But it's another 3.8 million of short-term debt and we're going to have to figure out a way paying off before the next recession ends. And so I, I think to your point, debt maturity, we're going to have to think about more than just what it does this year, but what it's going to do in the future. And that's what I think this board has been trying to do is look forward. We'll have to put short-term debt payment in that consideration as well.
Bob, to your point, I mean, last year, we went through the thing about, you know, um, populating the non-recurring capital with a certain amount of money. And, and part of this too is not just, I mean, yes, we have to make those decisions, but what good is it if you go out to the public and they're not having it, you know? Because they have a memory of, because not everybody's sitting here looking at the numbers and whatever. So their memory is, I mean, you know, almost a million dollars over budget for the police station. And the schools coming on and everything coming online sooner than I can even imagine. Because, you know, it's, oh, that's going to be '20, '21, '22, but things are starting to already happen. So, um, I think that it's going to be really important to temper those changes so that, you know, you're not going out three times to try to pass a budget.
No, I, I think that that's something we can all agree on. It's going to have to be discussed. What I would suggest is we finish up whatever questions we have for our first election on the operating budget. And I think you're probably going to want to go to capital non-recurring and capital.
Well, capital.
And then what we can maybe do, depending on how much time we have left, start our, our deliberation discussions with what's our framework? Right? Kind of set up our target. And I think Cynthia, what your chat, what you're talking about is going to be included in that discussion.
Yes, no, I agree, yes.
Right?
Matt? And I don't know if you can answer this or Bob can answer it. If we were looking, and, and again, this is just for my reference. I'm not going anywhere with it. If we were looking to keep the mill rate the same, let's just say we didn't want a mill rate increase. We wanted to keep it the same. What amount, what percentage increase would that come to, Bob?
What do you have to cut?
Like how much would you have to cut?
Another 1.99.
Another 1.99. So each mill is about 1.9?
Each mill is about $2 million.
About $2 million. So we'd have to cut roughly 50% of the budget. We'd have to cut it in half, right? Cause we're at a $4 million increase. Say it as an increase, you'd have to decrease, increase by half to have a zero, have a neutral effect on the, on the, right?
Right. That's, I think that's going to be an important point, right? That's going to be our point of reference in our discussion for 3.4.
That's what I just, I just wanted in my mind where we were at.
So a lot of things, kind of just following through, right? We'd have to get down to a total budget of about $77 million, or to a $100,000. That would result in little to no increase in the mill rate. That requires, that would account for an increased spending of 2.2 million roughly? I think to get to the 77,000, right? A little bit more. And what we currently have is an increase in the vicinity of about 3.9.
Right, exactly.
So we'd be looking at an additional 1.7, 1.8 million dollars of cuts.
I'd round it up to 1.9.
Yep, got it. Thank you. Okay, that would be a good point of reference for us. So any more questions for our first election on operating?
Nope. All right. Um, I'm going to go to capital.
Matt, sorry, just popped in my head, we cut the mill rate account?
From, no, it's, it's up from last year, but not as much as we wanted.
So what was the increase?
33,000.
So we're at 800 or something?
No, we were at 700 last year. Bobby put in a list of roads and priced it all out. It's in your material and public, and highway for 933,000. I had recommended that we go to 800. The board of selectmen just took the 933 and took an even 200,000 off to try to get the number down. So this year's recommendation that you're getting is 733,000, so just a very small increase over the prior years.
Do we have any money left over from last year bonds or anything like that back?
We, I don't, we didn't bond anything last year, did we?
Do we have money?
Bob, Bob mentioned that we did not, he didn't think we were going to have any money left over.
No.
Already finished up with this year's roads.
No, there, there were some emergency repairs, like the Taylor Road thing, you know, wintertime stuff, winter damage. So no, there won't be anything left in that.
Is there any, any more questions on operating budget?
Okay. All right. Capital, capital budget. Um, we, we literally tried to keep this within a range that could be, if, if, you know, this is a board of finance decision, but it could be paid from fund balance if that is possible, if possible. And tried to avoid the, the need to borrow money. So if you remember, the highway department put in, I think they wanted six heavy-duty trucks, uh, two medium-duty, one medium-duty with a plow. It came to a million dollars. What we put in this budget is two class eight trucks. Those are the big 42,000 gross weight, gross vehicle weight trucks at 200,000 each. We picked up one medium-duty truck in this and we put one medium-duty in the capital non-recurring that you'll see. Try to shift over to that. We put the Bethel High School track resurfacing in this, 125,000, excuse me. And that is something that definitely needs to be done, uh, this year. And of course, the boiler replacement. If you remember, Terry, Dr. Carver, both talking about the extreme need for heat um, in the high school, which is not going to go away. So the capital budget itself is 1.649 million. And I'll just flip over for a minute to the capital non-recurring. This is not the full list. If you look at what Bob handed out, there were a lot of things that we, that were in the capital request that we either moved to capital non-recurring or even a greater number, we moved to outer years uh, and lowered the priority on this. So this is, this accounts for almost all of the 650,000 that we have in there. There's a little bit in there left for some things that are underway there that, you know, that we can prioritize coming up as we enter the season. But, um, the, you, you can run through the list on this. I won't read it to you. The, there's a medium-duty truck, the other plow truck, band uniforms for the high school. The maintenance account, town hall maintenance, there's, we're just, instead of going through these things piecemeal, there, you know, there are, there are, there's carpeting that's unsafe, needs to be replaced. There's, uh, broken asbestos tiles that need to, where the floors need to be brought up and, and resurfaced. These are hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of stuff. What Brad and Bob and I did is just put a, a standard amount in, in the budget each year and then do the things that are necessary and push off the ones that are not. So this is like a standard maintenance account, HVAC issues that are dealt with out of that. Then you'll see the fire departments have some items in there, security systems. Uh, I've lumped some of this stuff together and, and put in a, just a subtotal rather than list them all individually. But, um, this is where that stuff goes. One of the things that we think is a really good purchase is the vent track mower for the parking rack department. Because if we get that, that could probably take 20 or 30,000 out of some of the other maintenance accounts because we would not have to hire a contractor to do some of the work, like in, in, in the educational park and in, around the solar farm. It's a, it's a multi-use tool that really would help increase efficiency of the staff. Same thing with the, uh, you'll see there's something I called a multi-function gator. That's a, that's a purchase that lets a few people do a lot more work. It's an efficiency tool. And it's one of those things that probably lasts eight to 10 years. And it allows a crew of two people to do in the same amount of time what six people would normally do. For parking rack and is the, in the cleanup and maintenance area. So these things are not, you're not being asked to vote on those because those are, those come out during the year.
I'm, I'm curious, man, just keeping all this information in my head is a challenge. I, I forgot what the specifics were on the $12,000 gator. What, what does that do? Is that the brush?
Yes.
Yeah, um, it, it's in the narrative. I, I can't remember either. I have the same problem you do.
I think it's like a grass brush, like a comb for your grass. You know, when you say that, um, well, you know, if we have this vent track and then it's going to increase efficiency for staff and whatnot, that's the kind of thing where I would love, it would be so much more clear for me if I had a table where you said, this is what we do now. These are the properties we maintain. If we had the vent track, we do this, that, the other thing. Because you say it might, it should.
No, no, Eileen covered this. She, she gave those numbers. Yes, she did.
She talked about it at her presentation.
It was in her presentation.
It cost 27,000.
Between, between the middle school.
With just the middle school?
That was 24,000, I think.
With, because we don't have equipment that can cut some of the steep hills. They hired a contractor for 27,000. So you'd have to do that again next year or you can buy this thing and then we can do it and cut that and, and not have that contractor.
No, I, I understood that part.
And what was the, I'm, I'm sorry, just a second.
Transfer station around the solar fields.
That was like nine or 10,000.
Well, we only paid 3,000 to do half of it, but we have to do the whole thing every year and that's $6,000 a year.
So can I ask a question about that line item? Cause it's a contracted services, right, for highway? And it's $128,000. Does that, does that have other stuff in there?
What's, what's, what's that?
So mowing the grass at the solar farm is mentioned under highway. Does highway have that under their department?
Correct, yeah.
Is it, is it highway or public works? I don't, I don't remember.
Well, it's one of those budgets. It's, it's one of Doug's budgets, yeah. It's probably highway, Doug.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll go with him.
But would Mark and Matt take that over with their vent trap?
Yeah.
Well, they'd loan the machine to, uh, uh, public works, that's all.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a town machine. It's not like they own it themselves.
So then I guess the question is, how much would that actually save us? Because that line item is like $128,000. Like, yeah, the all grass cutting.
No, 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 no.
The cutting of the grass there is only $6,000.
Oh, it's just $6,000?
Around the solar field. We have to do outside?
27, $128,000.
The, the contracted services for highway, you're seeing the contractors that, uh, like do the parking, some parking lots. The, the contracted services for highway, you're seeing the contractors that, like do the parking, some parking lots, like the train station over here, the train station up there. We have contractors that do police station. That's, is that, we don't have a truck that can get in there? Yeah, yes.
For the high school track?
Yeah.
Resurfacing? I guess my question would be is, are there any plans to bring the turf field back? Because, you know, once we resurface the track, I don't really think it makes sense to dig it up and do a turf field after that. So if we're going to spend...
We did have it checked out. They can, they can put what's called a bridge over the newly resurfaced track. I believe Mr. Foster heard some of the presentations too, which would allow the equipment to go over that. So it wouldn't impede one getting done at different time. Ideally, it's better to do at the same time.
Was there a difference in cost building this bridge?
Yeah, a little bit.
No.
Well, not much.
It was part of the total cost of doing it.
It wasn't line item, was it?
No, it was part of the total cost.
But it was definitely discussed.
I recall the, the price being as, as one way, we went for the turf field, and then, and it would be higher if we didn't, but the numbers that are shown, it seems like it was the lower price, like a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
The track was, was about one twenty-one, one twenty-five.
Okay, because my reflection was, that would be the price if we combined with the turf field.
No.
No, no, no.
We had a, we got a separate quote for it, just to get a good sense of how much.
I'm not arguing the need to resurface the track.
No, I know that.
I, I like doing things in proper order, so we're not duplicating effort and spending extra money because we didn't do this, you know, in a rush to resurface the track. And then next year you come back saying, well, now we want to do the turf field. And it's like, well, we just didn't track, so.
Well, we had a number of one thirty-three, but I believe Park and Rec got a very updated number. And that's the number that is used in the, in the...
No, I'm not disputing the number. I'm disputing, is now the time to do it if you're going to bring the turf field back next year? Is my question?
Well, you'll notice there's no turf field on the presentation.
I mean, I'm not being rude. I mean, it doesn't mean not coming back. I mean, it's, it's a valid question to ask, right?
They are, they are, the, the people who support the field are continuing to raise money.
Towards it.
Yeah, they, they have what, a hundred?
I think they have close to two hundred.
Two, close to two hundred thousand.
Correct, at this point. They're a long way from their goal.
My, my understanding about the track too is that the same person who donated, I don't know who it is, who donated the field house also built the track. And that it's some, that there's concern that the relationship would be compromised with this person if you didn't resurface the track. So I'm just putting it out there because I, you know, people talk to me, well, maybe five or so.
I think the commitment to the track was made separately.
Yeah.
When, when that donation was made at the time, which was before, before me, when I started. And there was, there was always that commitment there that after the ten years, I think it's coincidental.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep, that it, that, that person chose to make another donation. So I, I wouldn't, I talk to that person all the time, and I don't see any tie to that. It needs to get done.
I, you know, just report the news.
Yeah, the only thing I was aware of is it needs to get done just because it's ten years old.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, no, fair enough. I get, I get that.
What's the condition? I'm just curious.
It's discoloring. And so in that discoloring, it breaks down whatever the surface is. I wish I knew what it was, but it's, and that affects the, the overall...
Probably.
The cushioning.
Correct. Not using correct track terms. Correct. And so it's, it's essentially wearing down. And so it, it, I think what the town knew when they, when they accepted the donation, that it would eventually, you know, it would be in a cycle that it would have to be resurfaced. And that's what this is.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Carver, what is that cycle? Have we gotten?
Ten years.
So we've got it on ten years.
Yeah, and we're, yep.
Two thousand and ten.
Oh, it's actually, I'm sorry. Maybe eight years.
Any other questions regarding capital or non-capital non-recurring?
So I do have a question about work parking lot.
About what?
About paving work parking lot.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a need to do? Is there some safety issue or drainage issue? Or like, what's going on there?
Drainage, yeah. It's, it's a, it's a rutted dirt lot. It, we've been, we've been trying to pave, we've been trying to pave it and McCower and the side lot at Parloa for ten years. It always, one of those things that always gets moved back.
Is there a way to put, say, gravel down instead of asphalt to...
Well, they do. They, they, on an as-needed basis, they'll put riprap down or whatever, whatever that gravel is and, and grate it. And, but it, it gets rutted through the year, through the winter. But again, that's, this is, you, you don't even have to vote on this. This is, this is, this is something that this board will have the opportunity to vote on later in the year as we, because these, these things will come up one by one.
So we make this list, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the board of selectmen will recommend it. We say, all right, you know, we need to fix this and that, you know, we need to get the Bethel Fire Security System. We need to get the, the compressor and the masks. So we would vote on those, pass them to you, but they would be contained within the budget. We wouldn't need a town meeting or anything like that.
What we vote on is how much to put in that line. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, right, right. You're, you're voting on how much to put in the capital non-recurring. But still, again, you, you don't lose control of that. You still have the opportunity to vote on things as we, as we put them through.
Now, you mentioned possibly using the fund balance to pay for the capital plan this year.
That's entirely up to you guys.
No, I understand.
I'm just saying, we're, we're trying, we're trying, you know, I, I had discussions with your chairman and just tried to make it as reasonable as we possibly could to give you that option.
I'm just wondering how that affects paying down. I mean, it's kind of like a double-edged sword, right? You're taking on new debt, or you just pay this debt down and our old debt is still there. So, you know.
No, that's exactly right. The way I, well, it's kind of jumping a little bit into framework, but let's just, I'll be responsive to that. I think when we, when we look to what we have to pay for, we have a couple of different sources of funds. We have the budget and what we tax, and we have what we can use in the fund balance. That's really it. I mean, without raising more debt, we have those two sources of funding. And we have to figure out how to use that, those two resources to get all of these things paid for. And to your point, Brian, I, we've, again, three point eight of short-term debt that we need to pay off. It's either through budgeting, and there's some of it in the budget, perhaps more from fund balance. Now, we do have, we have a little better data point. The financial statements came out for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth. So we know what, roughly, we know what is available to us. In fact, those reports put us at nineteen million in the fund balance.
Around that, yeah, yeah.
So we know, you gotta do some calculations to kind of understand where the rating agencies, we want that balance to be. But we should have a little bit of access to, you know.
Just, just remember, we took two million out last year to pay down some debt. And my fear is that if we continue to draw down on it, we may be able to do it again this year. But I think we would have to pretty much stop after that. Otherwise, the rating companies are going to get a little nervous. We built a nice fund balance, but at the same time, they don't want to see, you know, the town rating it too. So it's a challenge. You know, how do you accomplish these different capital plans?
I was supposed to say, didn't you say that, that they don't look unkindly if you're doing it for improvements, for, for the town?
That's true. I mean, if you're doing it for capital improvements, that's correct, yeah.
I mean, again, looking forward, you know, on one hand, we're talking about, you know, paying down debt and the importance of it. But new spending's never going to stop. You're always going to have boilers that go, you're always going to have departments that need trucks. You know, and again, I'm, I'm not rehashing old wounds and I want to be respectful about it. It's always been my opinion that we need to manage debt because I really feel thinking we can pay it all off isn't realistic. Because, you know, last year we increased it, and it's like, we're not going to have these capital expenses. We had eight million dollars in capital surplus. If that's not a sobering statistic, then one, that's, I mean, that's a, what fifteen million did to that service. So, you know, again, I, I guess my hope is that we can just work together as a board in a bipartisan way and tackle this in a way that's going to help the town's financial stability and affordability going into the future.
Agreed. And look, we're fortunate because we are dealing from a position of strength. We just saw the town just had its AAA rating reconfirmed by the rating agencies, so we're in pretty good shape.
But as Bob said, we can't keep going to the fund balance, saying we're going to pay it off every year. It's just not realistic that that's going to happen.
You can't go into the fund balance and decrease it. You can go into it and use it if what we are pulling out of it continues to...
At the very least, any increase to the fund balance. Maybe we can transfer that at the end of the year to like capital non-recurring and start to pay out some of the big purchase items out of that.
Instead of adding?
Does it matter?
No, I said instead of adding to fund balance, do that for.
Yeah, I mean, and then the other part of it is, you know, it's in, it's in capital non-recurring. And the state is not, they're looking at the fund balance and they don't see the capital non-recurring. Let's put it that way.
How much are you allowed to carry over on capital?
We can carry over whatever's, I mean, we've got a few years of remaining balances, but they're small. You know, the old stuff could be five thousand, ten thousand dollars that we accumulate, and then we put it together and we use it for whatever purpose.
But would the state look at it differently if, you know, generally we figure one?
They're, they're looking at the fund balance and they're, that could be the reason why our ECS was cut back a little bit.
I guess my point is, we collect taxes that you figure ninety-eight point seven or something like that, I think was the number you gave me.
That, that's the assumption in the calculation.
So when we collect ninety-nine percent, conceivably we have seven hundred and forty thousand left over at the end of the year. My question is, is if you move that into a separate account, kind of like the, the high school does with their account, there's no problem with auditing or anything like that where we would, you know, come under the scrutiny of the state? Where your plan would be basically to expend it all?
In fact, Joe, Joe does it in his town too. He's the chairman of the board of finance. That's exactly what he does.
Yeah.
I imagine there's a more...
So you can set a minimum fund balance. We can say that, you know, the board of finance wants to maintain a minimum fund balance of fifteen million, realizing that eventually, as our budget grows, that fund balance still has to grow.
Correct.
Because we have to maintain that ratio.
And it used to be they, they wanted about a ten percent fund balance this year. Now it's fifteen to eighteen.
Also twenty percent, you're at fifteen million.
And, and basically part of the reason is because we're in Connecticut.
Yeah.
And we're close, right? We're at twenty percent now roughly. Roughly twenty, roughly, for your seven, four.
Didn't it also, Matt, come in, under discussion that the state wanted to know how much our fund balance was so that they could...
That was a couple of years ago, yeah.
Yeah, they already knew what it was.
No, but I mean, they were, you know, so that they could adjust the ECS, but clearly.
That actually, when that happened, that was when Governor Malloy was going to send us a bill for, what, was it two million dollars?
It was the thirty percent.
Yeah, for the, for the teacher's pension. So it wasn't the easy, it wasn't type of ECS. They were going to send us a bill for the teacher's pension plan.
We, we were sitting at a meeting and it was before lunch, and he came up to speak and he said, I looked at the checking account balances of all the towns in front of me, not the fund balance accounts. But he said, you have more money than the state, and we're going to have to do something about it.
Yeah, we had, there were a hundred and thirty-six towns represented at that meeting, and he said, I've checked every one of your fund balances before I came here today. I said, oh, that can't be good.
It just, it doesn't make any sense to carry excess fund balance and short-term debt.
No.
We really need to use the, whatever the appropriate amount is to cross short-term debt. And think about capital non-recurring and capital additions in a way that does not increase short-term debt, more frankly, long-term debt. Because we already got another, we already know what the long-term debt's going to look like. Any more questions for our first electman? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a short break or do we want to kick off?
I'd like to get at least a cup of water.
Let's take a ten-minute break. Come on back soon. Ten-minute recess. All right, let's, let's consider ourselves to be back from recess. What I'd like to, for maybe the next period of time, even though we're not gonna go extremely late tonight. But let's talk about what we want our framework to be so that we can have a high-level target. And then tomorrow we come back and talk specifics about how to perhaps achieve that target or get at least as close to that as we can. You know, there, we have a ton of information. Each month Bob hands out some statements. There's quite a few attachments in the budget bits. I think we would all be more informed if we go back after tonight and kind of look at those, look at that data. Things like the revenue numbers, the debt maturity schedules, again, all the things that we've seen before. But now we can kind of put in context of this year's budget. In the meantime, again, let's, let's think about framework. What, I'm gonna state what I think are the end of the spectrum of the framework. And then maybe we can just go down the list and, go down the table, get people's views on it and see where it takes us. But the way, the way I see this is that there's, at one end of the spectrum, there's framework number one. Frame, and I'm not value-adding anything to either of these frameworks. I'm just stating them as kind of objectively factual, right? Framework number one is a budget of five point three five percent will be accepted by the town. Because the town voted for improvements of the police station and the school renovation. And otherwise thought that we would go about in our typical kind of additional investment in the town each year. That's kind of framework number one at this end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum, where I would consider the framework number two, and we've touched on it, is a budget that results in little to no increase in the way. All right, based on the numbers that we've heard tonight and on all this material that we have. Again, I'd be the first one to say all these numbers swim in my head, so I do think we'll all be benefited by just taking a little bit of time letting it kind of settle in a little bit. But based on framework number one, it's a three million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, ninety-three dollar increase in spending. Again, five point three five percent. Framework number two, to get to little or no mill rate, mill rate increase, would have an increase in spending of two million, two thirty-six, one oh. The delta between framework one and framework two is one point eight million dollars. By way of just some relative perspective, that is about half, a little bit less than half, of the Board of Selectmen's recommendation to us. Just again, I'm not, I'm not intending to give favoritism to one or the other, just trying to set the goalposts for us to consider. When we look at the accounts, you know, we can all, again, let's go dig into them, kind of understand them and see, you know, how they fit into that overall picture. To me, those are the frameworks. Wanted to, I'll stop there and ask if anyone has, I know that's high level, there's a lot of specifics there, but any questions about those two frameworks?
When you say two point two, we're saying that's a zero percent increase in the amount. That's assuming, right, Bob? That's flat.
Yeah.
No increase.
Brings it back to thirty-two eighty-seven.
Well, we said little or none. There's a thing there between little or none. It's no or it's little.
And I say the little, right, because again, to some degree, we don't have scientific precision. But it'd be what most people would say. I'm sorry, Mr.?
I'm just saying insignificant. I'm just, I'm just pretending I'm at the store.
All right, just, this lady now will spend some time just kind of going down the board, getting people's initial thoughts. Rather than just pick on D, does anybody want, does anybody want to go first?
I'll just throw out there that I think you are right in, in one way, or I'd like to believe that the people who supported the projects that have added to the debt service will take the next logical step and support the increase that comes with it. That being said, you know, somewhere down the middle, I think would have to be some kind of happy medium.
So again, just putting a number to that, that'd be a nine hundred and thousand dollar decrease from the recommendation that's in front of us.
Well, if you look at it, if you're saying that we could only increase two point two three six to have from, you know, last year to this upcoming year to get no mill rate increase, one point three of it is fixed already with the increase in the debt. I mean, there's no wiggle room on that at all. So everything, any other decrease would be significant or would be, you know, spread across a much smaller amount of departments that is basically locked in stone. That would cannot be changed.
And what exaggerates it is it's not just debt service. There's salary increases, employee benefits.
Exactly.
So the population of expenditures that are subject to reduction dwindles.
My personal feeling is, and I'm sure it's not gonna be popular, I mean, I would like to cap it at two point five million. It still gives you one point two million in new spending. And again, my real feeling is, is let's say we cap it at two point five million. I think the prudent thing to do is come up with a number we're comfortable with and send that back to the selectmen. And, you know, they know, you know, every year we go through all these accounts and this thing. Matt can deal with his department heads and figure out where the best way to go about any cut is. But eventually, and, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, we're gonna have to tighten the belt. You know, our, our, our grand list generally grows on a good year, eight hundred thousand to a million. We haven't hit a recession yet, but January was one of the worst real estate markets in Connecticut's history in a long time. There's a lot of people saying that we saw a peak in real estate two thousand and eighteen. I don't know. You know, I'm, and I'm in the real estate game, right? So I'm hoping it's not true, but, you know, I'm even adjusting the way I do things. So that would be, my ultimate goal would be cap it at two point five million. You're still gonna see an increase in the no rate and you've still increased spending by one point two million on top of debt service.
Brian, I'm sorry, can you clarify, I'm not sure what you're talking about when you say, um, send it back to the first.
Rather, rather than our.
Because we can't. By charter, we have to do that. They've done their part. Now we have to.
We can cut.
No, we have to come up with the itemized amount.
We can cut it bottom line.
Well, no, we do bottom line for, um, the Board of Education and the library, but the charter reads that we need to, you know, we, each account, we, each account budget total is made up of the line items. And we have that control over those, so we have to set those.
Does this, I mean, I believe you, but does it specifically say that we have to go line by line by line and cut it specifically out of lines? Is it said that, Matt?
Let me find the.
Because I'm, I'm just curious. I, I think it's our, our prerogative, but I don't know if it's specifically, you know what I mean?
I remember, if I might, I might, I remember in my first year, um, the Board of Finance, I think Bill Slavkin was chair, and he asked the same question. And Marty was in the room and he said, pretty much the same thing Wendy did, the Board of Finance must vote line by, not, not, not on the individual object codes, but on the department codes, like one hundred, one twenty, one. So you have to, you have to, you have to vote on those. Now, if you wanted to get a recommendation, you know, it was perfectly willing to try to tell you what it looks like.
We can send it back to Matt before we approve it. There's nothing that says we have to approve it. We can say to him, hey, this is the number where we want to get it to. What are your recommendations? We don't have to vote.
Well, what is our, what is our timeframe? What is our deadline for this? We, you know, would have then some drop dead dates which we need to.
Okay, let's say we don't have any, that it's, we have plenty of time or we have time. So what I'm understanding is that we, um, we can go with our framework and we can decide what, maybe what percent we're happy with that we can live with. And then we can vote the budget down and it will go back to the first, to the selectmen.
No, it doesn't. Once the Board of Selectmen submits to us, which has happened tonight, they are out of the process.
Correct.
And it's just the Board of Finance.
You know, I've only been here for fifteen years now.
I, that's all right. I had thirty-nine, so, so I remember a little bit more.
No, you remember a lot. I, you know, that's, you're absolutely right, of course.
So that, I think that would be a great approach if you could do it. But we don't know the departments, like the department heads. We know, we're, we're finance experts, right? So for us, it's, we have a sense for how the town could put its financial projects or projections together. How the departments best spend that dollar or those dollars, they're best suited to make those decisions. I do believe, because I have looked at those in the charter, unfortunately, I think we were responsible for, but for the two bottom line, Board of Heads and library, I think we're responsible for doing a lot of that.
About the, the framework, I'm just gonna record that. I mean, every year, it's like the skipping, like a skip in the record that, I mean, we, we only have purview of a tiny little bit of it because everything's tied up with the unions, it's tied up with the. And, and, you know, I mean, it gives very little flexibility, you know? So I mean, it just, I just feel like it, it, there's so many factors that are just cast in stone that just keep, you know, getting more entrenched that it makes it difficult for anybody to make decisions.
Well, it makes it difficult for the town to do anything other than wage increases and debt service and just the fixed costs. There's no more money if you want to keep taxes the same. I'm, I'm, I'm feeling a lash of, um, degrees of freedom myself.
Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, there's about six hundred and twenty thousand, taking out debt service, of increase that we have no say over. The six hundred and twenty thousand comes from wage adjustments, salaries and employee benefits, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't work up those numbers, but it's probably in that ballpark because, you know, employee benefits, you've got the pension payments, you can't touch that. Yeah.
So we're at about one point nine million dollars in contractual and other expenses, right?
Yeah.
So if you looked at it, eight hundred thousand dollars in spending, it's two point seven million, and that would be true to programs. I said you have one point nine million dollars in fixed costs between debt service, salary increases, employee benefits, costs that we can't control. They're, they're numbers that we have to fund no matter what. That's an obligation.
No, it's, it's much higher than that.
Eight hundred thousand, that's what you're saying?
Well, debt service was one point three, Bob thought it was about six hundred, definitely just one point nine million.
I think what Brian's trying to do is to figure out what's the population of, of expenses that we have discretion over.
Right, so we, we, we don't have discretion over one point nine million of this budget. We have no discretion on that because it's debt service, which we agreed to, and it's pension benefits. So what we do have say over is roughly two, two million ninety thousand dollars worth of, and I hate to use the word discretionary spending, but-
Or new spending.
New spending, I mean, so, I mean, for us to say like, we don't ever cut something, we do. I mean, it's right there. We, you know, conceivably, we could say we're going to fund one point nine million and all our employee obligations are met, people don't have to worry about, you know, do I have, you know, my employment, you know, what's going on, you know? And maybe we're looking at it too simplistically, I think we would have to figure out, you know, the Board of Education was one point three million, we'd have to figure out where, are there any fixed costs in there that we don't know?
Well, there's salaries. And that, that's- And benefits.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm just trying to, that's just where I'm trying to go. I mean, I don't want to throw out arbitrary numbers without having some factual information to myself. So, you know, where are we where we're not hurting, you know?
Yeah, because every year we go through this where it's like, we know we can only look at a little bit, but we can talk about the whole thing, but we really need to know what we do have.
I think Brian has identified this as a wonder. What is, what are obligations, not obligations, which we are not able to compromise on. So now, our charter is to look at the areas where we can. And, you know, I think we're all in agreement that where we are right now with a roughly a five percent of four million dollar budget is not where we want to invest. And so, I also think that, given the areas that we have discretion, wiping those a lot and ending up down with a, you know, lovely two point two million dollar increase of three percent is probably unrealistic. I mean, it'd be wonderful to go out to the town and say, we're going to be flat, but I don't know if that's realistic. So we need to look at the two and say, what is the town going to not accept? Where can we cut without just destroying, you know, the, this year's budget? And so I think we need to, just like Brian said, let's, let's target those areas and, and go through the line by line items and see what there is that can be altered. And that's, that's probably the best approach we can take at this time.
I think, well, I was just going to say, I think while we can look at the fixed costs for the town operating budget, there are fixed costs in the education now that which you mentioned, Brian, that we don't know about. So this one point three four is not just discretionary spending, like some of that has to be spent. So, do, do you know the numbers for that?
It's one point two, right, is salary and benefits.
Well, one point two salary and benefits on the, and then another two hundred thousand is special ed tuitions and transportation.
Are you saying one point three million of your increase comes from salaries? And that's-
Salary and benefits. And then those other two hundred thousand, including bus contracts and special ed tuition. So I think when we did the presentation, we showed you that the discretionary was not, not very big.
And, you know, it's a lot-
Because we're eighty-five percent people, so for us, if we, if we make reductions, we make them in people. That's why we are-
Well, I mean, it's, it's sort of like a, a contradiction in a way, because I know you always say you're a people business and that's true, but I just think the unions are a people business, so that's the conflict. I, I just don't think they are. I mean, they're, it's not, not in the same way that you are, you know? The, the unions, you know, everybody has their own feelings about that. I think that the, the taxpayer is kind of, I mean, they, they did vote, you're right, they voted for the schools, they voted for the police station, they feel like they got screwed a little bit on the police station. That's, that's in their memory. So I just don't think they're going to be that ready to vote for any significant increase whatsoever. And I don't even know if they'll vote for a two point five percent increase.
Well, I don't have crystal ball, but-
How many, how much of that salary increase is new employees? A dollar amount with benefits for new employees?
Well, the, the reduction that was made by the Board of Selectmen was equivalent to our additional employees.
Two hundred.
That was two hundred thousand.
So two hundred thousand cover how many employees?
Four.
So their cut will eliminate any new employees for the Board of-
Well, no, because we have, we're mandated to provide a service.
To provide a couple.
So something else is going to be cut.
Another position will be cut, yes.
To be able to compensate, because we have to have those positions by state law.
Which are these positions now that are mandated?
The EL teacher, English lan, I'm sorry, I used slang, English language teacher of the high school.
Okay.
The world language teacher.
To meet credential requirement.
The only thing that's not maybe is the custodian, I'm sorry, custodian obviously is not. Um, and the, 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 the issue in our middle school, um, I can't have middle school classes of thirty-five kids. So that is not mandated, so that is one more position. But, um, so something else will have to go to be able to compensate.
And most likely a different position.
Correct.
I mean, part of the process we go through, Claudia, then, is we go back and we'll get our class sizes in every grade level. See if we can take one, you know, one position out of a grade level to offset. I mean, that's our process, the, the beginning of our process.
Okay, but for this year upcoming, you now have new, you must have this new world language teacher. And you must have this new English as the second language or whatever it's- Okay.
Right.
And we have to provide for certification purposes, that those other middle school positions, which we need to have to come from somewhere else.
Somewhere else. And what we will face that, we are, we, we have plans to even do it because, um, we're, the reduction was two hundred thousand, which took us to two point nine nine, but that basically was equivalent dollars of those additional positions.
Not that we need any more challenging and or complicated factors to really look at the various departments, ten of them have nothing but contract salaries. So they further, I think, what, thirty-seven accounts? So it's, that's about a third, uh, twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent of other reduction and what you're going to make for, for what you want to buy. Not to go and look for some reductions, just a further, narrow way of cool.
But if we're really talking about the possibility of taking the fund balance, you know, whatever we have left over this year, what we're really going to talk about? Because we collected a ninety-eight point seven, right? And we currently collect over ninety-nine point five.
Ninety-nine point three seven.
At ninety-nine point two seven. So maybe, wouldn't be that, maybe this isn't the year to increase capital non-recurring. Maybe it's not, maybe we look at, we talked about using those leftovers, setting a minimal fund balance, right? So you said a minimum, we're always going to keep our fund balance at eighteen percent or whatever Bob says they want. And those additional taxes that we, you know, collect each year that we're just throwing in the fund balance and we could throw into capital non-recurring account, and that covers, you know, more than a hundred and fifty thousand. So, you know, one percent of seventy-four million is seven hundred forty thousand. So take away point zero two of that, you're still almost at a six hundred thousand dollar increase, you know, from last year, you could throw it into capital non-recurring.
If, if I could-
It's, it's not seventy-four million though, because it's, there's ten million and all the money's coming in. So it's really like probably around sixty-four, sixty-five million.
So if it's six hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, it's still a huge, it's still a huge number that you could put into that capital non-recurring account without truly increasing the capital. You know, you take that hundred fifty out and just say, look, at the end of the year, we're going to maintain an eighteen percent fund balance, and whatever's left over, we can capture capital non-recurring, and that's going to be what we pay cash for items.
I'd like us to do some of that balancing. I, I do think it's intuitive financial advice to tell the town to keep a fund balance when we have short-term downs. It just doesn't make sense. But I think we want to do some of that balancing. Cynthia, you're looking at me like that's not right.
Oh, no, no, not that it's not right, but I just, it seems conflicting, because I know that Bob says about the triple A rating and that we've always said that, that, and you just said that it's not fair to tell the, the public that to keep the fund balance.
Isn't it kind of like having a giant savings account and then having, um, credit card debt?
Oh, I know, but there's been, over the, changes over the years as far as what, you know, popularity of using it or not.
We have to do a good job educating folks, right? The, the fund balance in the latest financial statements is about nineteen point two million. If we do some math and try to figure out what's available, we should use that available amount to, I believe, pay down a short-term debt. We have more short-term debt outstanding than we have available fund balance. But to stop us from re-incurring short-term debt, I think we need to think about using capital non-recurring and putting some of these items into that account.
May I ask a question to Ann? Ann, when things, if we ever get to, since you have history on it, when we get to a recession or we get to a downturn, how does that affect your collection rate?
Oh, well, we talked about it.
I know, I don't remember.
Uh, but I think maybe I talked about it more at the selectmen's meeting than this one. Uh, when, like in two thousand eight, two thousand seven, we had a real downturn. And, um, the collection rate, yeah, the halfway point was really very low and everybody stopped spending, the Board of Ed stopped, everybody gave back, um, I think the Board of Ed, you can give them back furlough days at that time. You know, we just had to stop. Now, it picked up in the end and we were probably ninety-eight. I don't remember where we ended up, but close to what had been budgeted, but not ninety-nine. Very close, so ninety-eight, ninety-eight, some, something like that. So, I mean, it has, obviously it has an impact. What I was going to say, and I'm, you might correct me, Bob, but don't we put some of that into the budget already? The back taxes that we collect?
Yeah.
Isn't it already part of the budget, so?
It's on the revenue that we-
Oh, it's over and above, over. All right, I misunderstood what Brian said then, yeah. So, I mean, we, we do get there, um, how the town gets through it, that's your department and my department. But we have been there, um, and we managed to really come up. The problem is, is if you decide or to budget more, like say, make it ninety-nine percent of seven ninety-eight point five, problem is, is all you have to have is one big company. Like, I have one, actually prior to me being tax collectively, had one of the larger corporations that filed bankruptcy. And that's it, it's automatic stay, you can't collect a penny. And so, until they come out of bankruptcy, and then you're on a plan. And it takes a long time to get that money, you don't get the interest, federal bankruptcy, overrules everything. So if you have a big company that does that, and you are seeing more and more large companies put in those positions, Sears, um, but, you know, um, if we have something like that happen, then that just blows out of the amount.
I don't think anyone's recommending to go against your guys' recommendation. That wasn't my point at all. My point was, is that we normally over-collect and take that and move it to-
And that's always my goal.
You know, set our minimum fund balance to keep our triple A rating, right? Because that's pretty important.
Oh, when we collect well, as we have been, it leaves not a lot on the books to collect the interest on and stuff, because all that helps, you know? The one people pay late, yes, the town, you know, there is interest, or, you know, the interest collection's there as well. No, eighteen percent a year.
Oh, sorry.
For, for the next meeting, Bob, do you think you could put together those numbers in the salary line that we talked about with the police department? In terms of, you know, how much you generally have left over in salary that can cover the overtime? If we decided we wanted to make a cut to the overtime, you know, realizing that not all the police officers are on top step, not all the police officers are there all year, you could do something like that for us.
Right, okay.
That would be very helpful, well, at least for me for the next meeting.
Um, when are we going to meet again? Tomorrow night, will recess tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll recess at some point, pick it up tomorrow, six thirty?
Well, six thirty or, or seven, whichever one you want, I don't know. Because we're recessing.
So are we going to start tonight or just all go home and really think long and hard?
My, my recommendation would be for us to go home and to look at all the data that we do have. We have a lot of information, again, that's been handed out to us at Board of Finance meetings that are in the presentations, and I think if we were to look at it again, in light of what we've heard recently, I, I think it would just make for a more informed, more efficient meeting tomorrow. You know, we'll try to keep ourselves out of rabbit holes, stay to task. But that would, that would be my recommendation, rather than spending any more time tonight kind of inefficiently and maybe without having a sense in our own mind where we want to come out on the front. But I, look, you know, I'm only one second, so where folks think. I, I think I would benefit from going in and identifying what we talked about here on a macro level and look at the individual counts and see where we think, um, we have room for a dis, further discussion. And so I, I agree that we need a little more time to make that investigation and come back fresh tomorrow.
I'm, I'm fine coming back tomorrow. I would just hope that the start of the meeting, we come to a number that we're looking to get to, rather than just- If you, if you don't have a finite number that you want to get to, every spending here can be justified. I mean, I don't believe anyone isn't making an argument for justification. It's our job as the Board of Finance to come up with a number that we feel comfortable that's not going to, you know, hurt us financially. So I'd really like tomorrow to start with identifying a number, and what do we need to do to get to that number? That would be my recommendation, because, you know, without some sort of guideline, I mean, you're going to go through every single line and you might not get anywhere close to where you need and then realize this budget's not going to work. So if we all think about it, you know, collectively, I think, you know, the majority will rule, but there's got to be some number in everyone's mind where they want to get to and feel comfortable with. And the only thing, Bob, would you be able to, or maybe through Matt, can you email us, like, just the anticipated growth? I know you're saying it's around a million, but like, the revenue, I'm kind of really more interested in it, it's like-
Well, you got to remember, the open grand list is about a million dollars. And then last year, we had the discussion about putting into, uh, the calculation of the no rate, the money that we were supposed to receive in the ECS.
Right.
Okay, and it was decided that, no, we're not going to do it, because we weren't sure if the state was going to continue doing it. It looks like the money's coming in on target. So assuming that it stays on target, we're going to put that in. So that's like two million dollars right there. That's why the five, um, the three point nine in expenses is not, I mean, it's a big increase, but you got two million in revenue. That's offsetting that, so that's why, you know, it's, it's less than a, a million in, in increases. So if we hadn't done, if we did it last year, this would be a bigger increase this year.
Yeah, but eventually we could, my only point is, at some point, we just need to tighten the belts and like realize, you know, we got to kind of control where we're headed, because eventually we're going to hit a downturn. And the last thing I want to see is layoffs and not honor your commitment to employees. I mean, towns are a people business, right? Think about it, your majority of your expense is your people. And I think we just need to figure out a sustainable path forward, because, you know, taxes, and I'm not just talking about Befal, I'm talking about in general, your federal tax, your state tax. Yeah, Connecticut is a state that's losing population. And I don't think that's something we want Befal to continue that trend. That's just my personal feelings. You know, that's just my personal feelings.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So, I walk away here with a general overview that I think is correct for me. So, the town has one point eight six fixed cost. We have to, that, those are increases, that's fixed. The school has one point two, fixed, that's the deal. So, we're at slightly over three million dollars. That's just our increases that we have no control over. And you're saying there's two million dollars that is coming in to offset that?
That's offset that, but offset all adjustments.
Offset all adjustments?
Yeah.
But if we were to just say, okay, we're just going to do austerity, we're just gonna do what we have to do, there's two million dollars to offset that three million. So, we essentially have one million in spending that we are, that's fixed, that we have to spend, and it is not, there's no revenue to account for that. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I just need to make a correction. It's actually one point six million in fixed costs for education, is that correct?
No, because...
Then let's give them a right number.
So, we started at one point five four nine, and two hundred is gone. So, we're at one point three four nine. And so, we are down to, there's nothing, I mean, you take that two hundred out, any discretionary is gonna go, so there's, we're down, we're back to the salaries and benefits.
And you just make sure we're all on the same page. And again, I'm not suggesting this, I just think as a legal matter. When I say non-discretionary, I mean, we have a contractual right or obligation to do something and no alternative approach to that item but to do it. So, debt service, right? If we don't make debt service, the town will be performing itself. While everything else, it's discretionary, but it has real...
You can, you can reduce headcount.
Real human cost. But, but, yeah, just to roll on the same page.
No, agreed.
It's not like debt service.
Right. Okay, but for the town, that number is one point eight six.
One point eight seven.
There's debt service, there's salaries, there's wages, and there's employee benefits. Like, you don't have choices on those things, right? So, that's the list for the town, it's one point eight six.
Unless you reduce headcount.
Unless you do the same thing.
Unless you reduce headcount. Right. Okay, so, assuming that that would be a last resort, what would the number be for Board of Ed that is the most...
We're there, I mean, that's...
Yeah, but what's the number? What word is it, this?
One point three four nine, one point one.
It's a one point six.
I mean, the two hundred came out, but we haven't decided where it's coming out of. So, that's where it's a little bit confusing. So, our original presentation to both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance has an increase of a million five forty-nine. Of the million five forty-nine, eight thirty-eight was the increase to wages, five thirty-two was the increase to benefits, and two hundred and three was the increase, and that's basically it. That was the increase to our busing contract and the increases we're getting for special ed tuition. So, we're there. I mean, all of it was, all of it was contractual, but with the two hundred, we are gonna have to decide where to go. I mean, it doesn't mean you can't not go there. I can't reduce the number of buses, but as Bob said, you can reduce people. You can reduce people, because back in oh eight, oh nine, nine, ten, ten, eleven, we reduced people. I mean, when you get to that point, that's where we have to go. That's, that's what we are.
So, if you include that, you're at three point one, three point two. But then the remaining balance, that's seven hundred thousand, you got increases in utility and some of the other accounts that, I mean, electric, electrical goes off. You know, we were in a really good contract at like seven point six kilowatt, cents per kilowatt hour. It's gone to about eight point five. So, there's a cost there. I mean, you gotta pay the electric bills, you gotta pay the fuel bills, they go off. I mean, so, added that seven hundred thousand that's left, it really isn't totally discretionary. I mean, there's...
Are you talking seven hundred for the school budget, is that where you're... Yeah.
No, I'm just saying that there, one point three million dollar increase?
Yeah.
That's not discretionary, I mean, that's...
No, no, I understand. My, what I'm...
So, you had to run free...
I was happy to hear you say there's potentially two million dollars to offset...
Three point nine.
But...
Because the increase in expenditures is five point three five. When you take off those revenues, you're down to the two point seven, two point eight.
And just to go through it one more time, to make sure I'm saying it right, but also to make sure we all understand, right? If framework one is just as it is, like three hun, like three million, nine ninety-two, zero ninety-three, five point three five percent, that three million nine is more than five point three four percent increase in spending. Actually, that is an increase in spending, but it comes down lower on the mill rate because of the increase in revenue.
Yeah, right.
However, then you got framework number two, that's the little to no mill rate increase, a total increase in spending of two million, two thirty-six, one oh one. The difference between those two numbers is a million eight. So, that's what we have to try to find among, if we were to try to go from framework one, framework two, we have to try to find in that, those budget numbers, one point eight million dollars of additional items.
So, what, we maybe already talked about this, I apologize for being late. What was the mill rate if we were to do the five point three five?
Right now?
No, no, if we did the five point three five increase.
What is the increase?
It's in the...
It's in, it's in, it's in my presentation.
This is thirty-three seventy-six.
I'm sorry.
Thirty-three seventy-six.
Which is an increase of how much?
Point eight nine.
Uh, point eight nine increase in the mill rate, or two point six eight percent. Page five of this presentation.
Bob, assuming we don't transfer anything over too long term, but where does our debt service go next year?
Oh.
Do you know how much approximately?
Probably around five, six, five, seven. And that doesn't include, that doesn't include the interest that we're gonna have to pay on the short-term notes when we borrow, no, twenty million dollars for renovation.
So, that would be an increase of how many hundreds of thousands, do you think?
For the interest, about six hundred thousand.
So, we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar...
Plus the increase in the debt service.
Which will be around how much?
About five hundred thousand, so one point one...
One point one million dollars next year.
So, twenty-one.
We're already behind one point one million next year. So, like I said, at some point, we just gotta place a bullet and say, you know, however we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, because, and debt service won't really start coming out for, what, five years? Bob, roughly, five, six years?
It peaks right now, I think, at six, five, and then it starts to come down a little bit after that.
Yeah.
But that's about four or five years from now.
Right.
We can manage that.
Assuming, assuming the schools go in the way we planned it, it could be later on, and maybe the increase isn't as drastic.
But we can manage that a little bit, right?
Yeah, definitely.
But I mean, there's still our numbers, right? Even if we paid off short-term debt and we got that number down at eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, there's your whole increase in the grant list right there, next year, if you had a healthy year.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a quick statement?
Sure.
Before you recess for the evening, I just wanna throw out a concept. And basically, I agree with Wendy's comment when you opened up the discussion. The position of the Board of Selectmen is, I think I can safely say, that we put forth this budget with the understanding that the voters who approve these projects should have an opportunity to pay for them and maintain their current services. Otherwise, we would've given you a smaller budget, and we would've made cuts. I just wanna point out that, you know, when you're talking about the fixed costs that can't be changed, you're, so far, you're only talking about the increases in those. But when we look at the town budget, and I'm just gonna focus on the town budget for a minute, we have, between town and schools, we have over eleven million dollars that go in the town ballot line that can't be touched. So, it's debt, it's insurance, it's utilities, all that stuff. Five point six million dollars of that is for schools alone. That, all that burden shows up on the town side. And the only reason I bring this up is that the town runs really, really lean. We are growing, we're a growing community. We have had no headcount increases in any of the areas where we really have a lot of new work going on. And when you look at your salary lines, you look at the schedules that I gave you and that you had before, you'll see that all of those salaries increases are driven by either a modest increase in part-time help or taking some part-time help up to full-time, which is in Laura Vasile's department. Because when we go through the summer months, Laura Vasile works seven days a week. I get emails from her at eleven o'clock on Saturday nights. We have, with many departments like fire marshal, building officials in Laura's department, they have a statutory obligation that they must do their work for the public and issue their permits within thirty days. And, you know, so if there's, if there are any deep cuts on the town side, I can't go there. You know, you're, you just have to understand, I understand what you're saying. You, I, some days I don't envy me, and some days I don't envy you. And this is, this is one of them where I don't envy either one of us. But you're, you're looking at slashing into the capital non-recurring and/or highways, because notwithstanding any other, maybe, maybe you can make some minor adjustments in overtime, things like that, as you were saying, Brian. But I don't have any well to go to. So, just, just to, for your, not trying to keep everybody awake at night, but just to mull that over. So, I, again, I, I might be crazy, but I believe that the public should have an opportunity to maintain the services that they have and pay for what they voted for. So, that's it, I won't mention it again, although I probably will.
Any more for tonight? We do adjourn?
Recession.
No, recess. You don't wanna adjourn.
Recession to tomorrow at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?